I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good. Angie, could you take the attendance, please?
You done this? No, no, no.
Here.
Kathy Conrad.
Yeah.
It's my friend.
Here.
And Jack is absent. He will not be coming in. Okay, so perhaps we will start with the approval of the minutes from the last meeting? I'm gonna say whenever that was, but we haven't been here in a couple. September? Okay, so we have a motion to approve? Evie made the motion, have a second. John seconds, or on favor. I opposed, carry. Okay. P L C D A two thousand twenty-three zero zero four six, One Ingalls Avenue. The applicant, Joseph Saliento, poses to lease a portion of a now vacant building to Kennedy's Tow Toon Tire. Cute name. An automotive repair company with towing, which requires a used variance. So the applicant is Joseph Saliento, not Kennedy's, that would be you. Do you want to come up, or have your representative come up? I will say that there are only four members present, so you need to have, you'll need to have an unanimous vote in order for this to be approved. Do you understand that? I think you had it clicking on the side.
For the bottom.
Oh.
I mean, the microphone itself.
Hello. Understood. Yep, okay, good. All right, so I'm gonna understand. Go ahead, you can introduce yourself, please.
Good evening, everybody. Hope everyone is well. My name is Michael Goldstein, I'm an attorney. I am here tonight on behalf of Joseph Saliento, the owner of the property located at One Ingalls Avenue in the city of Troy, Troy. As you stated, we seek a use variance to lease a commercial portion of the pre-existing building located at One Ingalls Avenue to an automotive repair shop, Kennedy's Tow Toon Tire. Obviously, I've submitted a fairly lengthy application, so I'm not here to reiterate everything that's contained in the application. I'll just submit a brief statement and then we'll answer any questions for us. So when you look at the overall composition of this particular area of Troy, it's without question that an automotive repair shop conforms to the status quo. If you leave this building and you head north River Street, which I did today, you will find exactly five other repair shops building within a radius of my client's building, one of which actually is directly across the street, approximately two hundred and fifty-nine feet away. Kevin Brown's Auto Body Shop. To me, it doesn't quite comport with common sense. An auto body shop is a permitted use on one side of the street, and on the very same side of the street, on the very, on the other side of the same street, a prohibited use. Our application for use variance is simple, to allow the exact type of business already operating in this area. When Mr. Saliento purchased this building in late two thousand and twenty-two, there was no provision in chapter two eighty-five of the city's code that specifically prohibited an automotive repair shop from operating in this area. In fact, the historical occupants of One Ingalls Avenue demonstrates a history of commercial business use, including both towing and automotive repairs. I provided this list as exhibit one to our application to review. Also, as you can see, the financial documentation exhibit two, my clients expended a significant amount of financial sources on his buildings since purchasing. Mr. Saliento is a responsible commercial business owner who maintains his buildings in such a way that provides value to the surrounding properties. In short, we believe the concrete warehouse composition of the subject property, as well as the area in which it's located, without question supports our application forbidding an auto body shop like Kennedy's to operate. Thank you. With that, we'll answer any questions.
Did you, go ahead.
I just wanted to, first of all, say that I do appreciate how thorough your application was. We don't often see that. Whereas you kind of spelled out every permitted use and why that wasn't necessarily going to work for you. I do appreciate that. I also do want to say that the building looks beautiful. You know, it really does. It's definitely a nice, you know, aesthetic in the neighborhood. I did have a question about why the back is full of Kennedy trucks and signs now, when we have not acted on the permit?
Right, so I'll attempt to, there's a joke, you're about to fill in the blanks if possible, but so there was an agreement, an informal agreement made sometime earlier this year where it was agreed that Kennedy's was going to operate, I would say sometime in May, beginning in May. So here, why don't you explain?
So when we, we talked, see Kennedy confronted me, I put the sign out front, as I was remodeling the building, right? Fixing it up. And he came in early March. He's like, listen, I'm selling my building where he's at. I need a place to go. This is ideal, fenced in yard, be great for my business. I'm like, listen, if you're interested, let's make some agreements right now, and I'll know I got a tenant coming up. And he's like, you know, let me think about it. So about a week or so goes by, I contacted him, and I said, hey, you know, what's your, what's your thoughts here? Because if you're not, I'm gonna entertain other phone calls, you know what I mean? And I was getting phone calls, you know, church organizations, you know, one, you know, it's just ones I'm really not accustomed to using in my building, okay? Because initially, what I normally do, my, I'm like a small mill, right? So I find distressed property, like warehouses, because I own like five of these. And they're easier to fix up, and the reuse of them is great, right? Because they're well-built. A lot of these buildings are great, they're, this one block, so I like them. So they're easier to fix up. I'm a contractor and masonry, so it's easy to fix. So anyway, getting back to the story, he'd come back, he's like, yes, I'll take it. I go, well, I need a little bit of time. I gotta finish it up, you know? So come in July, okay? He's like, listen, I sold the building. I have to get in. I'm like, well, I'm not quite ready for you right now. He goes, can I just bring some of the stuff here? Because if I can't, if I don't get it out of this property, they're gonna start suing me, or something with the, with the idea of him still being on that premises and not having his stuff moved. So it was on like a Friday afternoon, he called me, like, I'm desperate, I gotta do it this weekend. That's when I said, all right, just do it, and we'll finalize the lease agreements and stuff like that. Now, I did all that. Then, within a few weeks of him kind of moving his stuff, the code enforcer came. And
describe, I mean, does that officially answer your question? So it's not, they're not operating? So they're, so Kennedy's is not so he doesn't have an operational business at this time?
We're waiting for further instruction, that's why we're here this evening before you all, right?
I mean, ideally, he wants to start operating. Obviously, it's been four months, and it's been swamped, we hadn't made any money, but he's still living off the receiving. I kind of feel like, you know, I'm really hurt of this guy, but that's why I got Mike, I said, Mike, we're gonna figure this out. I've never done any variance stuff. I go, so you, I don't know how to approach that. Somebody else, I went through, was just, you know, how the or, oh, putting this person in there, you fill out a form, and then it's pretty much yes or no like that. So I came across all this. And then, of course, the change of zoning.
April, so you purchased. So you purchased the property when?
In
Okay.
Closed down in January.
Okay, and at that time, were you aware of the zoning that was in place for that building?
Yeah, well, I've talked to, I didn't come down here to talk to the I talked to a realtor, a real estate agent in a previous home. And I'm like, he goes, oh, yeah, no problem at all, yeah, I've been operating here for years. And he was a drilling company. He would fix his vehicles in the building. And the building is gonna happen, no matter what. So I was kind of under the impression that what was happening there was allowable moving forward. Never thinking that it would be under, you know, all these different variance variations that
So what, yeah, so I'll, I'll, I'll pick it up from there. So what Mr. Saliento did before he purchased property was, he actually obtained an environmental survey study that was done in two thousand and fifteen for, for a different potential purchaser at that time. In this environmental survey study that was done, which is where I actually obtained the list of historical occupants of One Ingalls Avenue, it lists the subject property as a mixed industrial residential area. So Mr. Saliento understood that to me, mixed industrial as in permitted an auto body mechanic shop. When you look at the historical occupancy of One Ingalls Avenue, you've never seen any residential use of that property at all, despite it being, that we have up here in R two, actually in R two zone before the amendments to the code. And in this particular R two, it just seems to be a particular area that was kind of couched in between industrial to the north and a B five commercial to the south. So it just, it seemed to be somewhat of an arbitrary call out, but even in the city's code, there was nothing that expressly prohibited the use of an auto body mechanic shop, right? That's evidenced by the historical occupants of One Ingalls for over the past century.
But you realize that when a property changes hands, it's, it's the onus of the new property owner to determine what what is currently zoned. Doesn't, historical occupancy doesn't really matter at that point? You've changed hands now, and now you need to abide by the current zone, which I realized changed during the ownership. At no time would this have been an allowed use.
So I, I guess that's a little bit confusing because of the idea that we have a drilling contractor and a sign manufacturer as the immediate occupants prior to purchase. So nowhere does that fit within the permitted uses under R two. And it doesn't fall within the special permit uses that cites the R one, which are churches and schools. So the really, I guess the code was unclear about whether or not an auto body mechanic shop, private amendments, was permitted. It wasn't explicitly spelled out under the previous version of the code. Unless I'm missing something.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions?
Um, I have some questions. Um, the new owner.
Joe Saliento.
You indicated that there were other calls, that you're a contractor, that it's easy to fix your property. That kind of contradicts some of the documentation of all these costs you incurred. I don't know whether you had any related involvement in those other entities that were doing the fixes, whether they were real costs out of pocket or not, or whether you did have other options here. Because you said, well, if this person doesn't respond, Kennedy, I'll, I'll call some other people. So it sounds like you did have options.
Yes, you're right, people call. I also want, in the building, based on the financial investment that I was making, what this, you know, what the other tenants would want, right? So the thing about it was getting calls, I didn't have to change, I didn't have to cut off concrete, and all kinds of additional costs that would have been applied that I'd have to carry to get them in there, and it wasn't, it wasn't like financially feasible for what they wanted to pay for a square foot. So I always, I kind of do my own interviews and say, okay, what would be? And then when they give me a list of how they want to be booked, like, financially, I really can't do due because there's too much money. I'd rather do something that would look less invasive.
Which is, which is basically what we've said in our application, which is, it really was, even though we was taking calls from potentially other suitors, it wasn't economically feasible for him to put that particular type of applicant into this building based upon the composition of it. And that's what we've said in our application. All the permitted uses under the new version of the code really are not economically feasible. Theoretically, perhaps, if you had, you know, endless amounts of money, but this is a fiscal decision that my client made to purchase this property to make money, and, you know, the other permitted uses under the code really aren't feasible for, for conversion process.
Any other, any other questions? Evie, you got another one, did you say?
Following the short environmental assessment form, number twenty in particular, there's some others that I found, but it was the most important one, says, has a site of the proposed action or adjoining property in a subject remediation. And you checked yes, and it says, if yes, describe, and you didn't describe any.
I think when I filled that out, that was auto body. Or if, if it was not, then I certainly checked yes. I, I'm almost positive that was auto body. When I filled out the form online as Angie instructed me to do.
Remediation efforts?
No, ma'am, no.
Any? Anything else? Karen?
I'm sure, I don't have a a specific question, but I do have a concern. The new code was just adopted. The code includes a specific prohibition against this type of business in, in that that particular neighborhood. So the new code was adopted in April, we're in December. My concern is that, you know, in such a short period of time, we're already undermining the, the intention of the, of the updated code.
Yeah, I agree with you, John. But, you know, I mean, we started a new, we got a new code, and that's what we're supposed to be following, and to start out by saying we're going to put in a variance. I mean, it isn't even just an area variance, it's a use variance to go into that particular zone. To me, you know, a lot of hard work went into the new code. All for a reason, and I want to say particularly, but certainly as far as the riverfront area is concerned, that was a I mean, Katie, you were on the committee for it, but I mean, am I right? The riverfront has always been a huge asset, we hoped, to the city. And we wanted to continue, as a city, we wanted to continue it that way, and then to and this is right next to the boat launch, I read.
It's about, it's about maintaining the it's about sorry, I lost my train of thought. It is about maintaining the river views, but it's also about the river itself. An automotive repair service within five hundred feet of the seawall is, it's not just about the aesthetics of it. It's about the safety of it, it's about concerns. And so to grant a variance like this, you know, like John and Kathy said, very careful consideration was given to riverfront areas.
Understood. If I may, I, I think the nature of the prohibition is relevant in terms of the context here. The prohibition under the code, under two forty-five eight three, is five hundred feet from the seawall. My client's building, I think at last approximation, was roughly fifteen feet in violation of the code, so I, I mean, I understand that careful consideration was, was given when drafting the code. I just think that that's somewhat of a hyper-technical application in the terms of a prohibition, particularly when you have another auto body shop, you know, a hundred feet down the road, so it's
I'm sure that whoever wants to communicate the next term, you know, will probably face another problem with the variance. And the feet that you were just referring to for the variance, that's not that's the area variance that you would have to get. The first hurdle you have to pass is the use variance, which has nothing to do with how many feet away it is from the from the river. And I will also say that it is beautiful. I was down there, but when you have an automotive repair and storage place, it isn't just the building, you know what I mean? If you put a sign studio back, you know, or something like that, which nobody even knows what's going on in there, because as a matter of fact, I forget, but what is the name of the building? What was the name on the front of the building?
Sun Environmental.
Sun Environmental. I thought, ooh, that looks nice. And then you take a right, and you got all the Kennedy's tow trucks, and I understand why they're there now, but of course, if you lease to them, they're gonna be there all the time, along with all of the cars that they tow to go there, blah, 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 and according, and along with the cars that they're fixing. With an auto repair storage facility, quite frankly, it's very difficult to make one look attractive. I think. From the, from the parking, from the outside part. You know, you could pull a car into the back of Sun Environmental or whatever, and it probably, but then they go outside. It's the parking, it's the outside part of it that is like, and that, it goes along with the build, with that business. That's all there is to it, you know what I mean? There's no way you're gonna have a towing facility to not have cars all over the place waiting to be picked up, there's just not. So, I mean, you know, spin it as you will, that's the way it is. And that's what we have to consider, and as I say, so much time went into the, and thought went into the new code, and then to turn around, as John said, within a certain number of months, and grant a variance for something that really doesn't belong there anyway, you know what I mean? It's just, to me.
May I ask a point of clarification?
Surely.
So when I was preparing the application and reviewing the code, there was a little bit of an ambiguity in the sense that an automotive repair services minor company was a special use permit under the code, but a motor repair services company was a prohibited use. And I was wondering if there was any insight as to how the board distinguishes between the both.
Perhaps.
I don't think either of them was even allowed in mixed use two.
I, I mean, I can show you.
Okay, if you have anything you want to show.
If you look at ten to automotive repair services minors and stuff needs. But the next page, motor repair services company. And I addressed that in my submission.
The only thing I can say about this, whereas we might rule on the difference between a special use permit and a use variance is that a special use permit would need to be in line with the city's comprehensive plan. That's kind of our biggest test.
He said it was some kind of motor repair.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Motor vehicle repair service.
I, I'm missing my word. Well, intent upon this.
Now, I understand what you're, what you're trying to answer this question, but in this is what the point of the question was. If the idea is that it's, it's a prohibited use, and therefore it doesn't belong, but then at the same token, the code recognizes that it can belong under certain circumstances, AKA a special use permit, it somewhat undercuts the idea that it doesn't belong there too.
Well, first of all, undercuts a stone work. It sounds like, you know, but second of all, then that would be something you would have to take up before it cuts to us, all right? And there's a question as to whether or not it's called wrong, and that has to be determined by some, not by this board, it's to me.
Oh, okay.
You know what I mean?
I mean, I don't want to waste our time, you know?
You know, I'm, I'm, this is not my career. It's for the people in the planning department or whatever to make the determination. That's when you started out, and you said, Angie told you you had to throw out this side of the other thing, but and then we go by that. It's not up to us to determine what, we to determine whether or not it should be a use variance for a special use permit. That, then I would think, then this would be tabled and go back to okay, am I, maybe with me?
Maybe with me, I'm sorry.
No, I mean.
To address your question, would make sense if, if there's a question as to
Is it whether or not we're asking the wrong question? Right, right. If he asked about on the, the exact thing or something, then it needs to go back to have that clarification made at that level. You're all you're asking for, and then you would come back at a later time.
It looks like they might.
And ask again, unless you came up with the answer.
So the code defined auto repair minor and major in our zoning code. Yeah, there's a bit of definition side. So based on what they are trying to do, it looks like, yes, it's gonna be major. Because it's gonna be, yes, it's gonna be major, which is prohibiting any of their the zones.
So the definition of minor repair.
They're, they're major.
Tinting.
Yeah.
Installing a stereo system.
Yeah, okay.
Those little modifications.
And that could be by special use permit, it's not necessarily allowed.
Major repairs.
Prohibited, okay, and that makes sense.
Okay, all right, so then, did you, did you get?
I understood, I, I, my, my last question too. So, so it sounds like the basis, and correct me if I'm wrong, so the prohibition is the exterior of the north portion of my client's building, where the cars in that enclosed fencing area would be stored while they're being worked on temporarily, is that?
No, the prohibition is a use. You're, you're, you use it for a prohibited use.
I understand, but I, I set forth for a variety of reasons why we believe
The other things wouldn't, wouldn't fly, the permitted uses wouldn't fly.
Other thing is that we have a test, right? We have a findings of fact, we have a test that we need to apply to each case. Um, you know, you've provided some financial information. There are just find my use variance, okay. Um, the project will not alter, will or will not alter the character of the neighborhood. The fact that it's within five hundred feet of the seawall, it will, I believe, absolutely alter the essential character of the neighborhood. That area was a subject of a, a big environmental cleanup. And whether or not the variance is self-created, the bottom line is that the property was purchased under one zoning code, and then the zoning code changed, but in neither code would it have been an allowed use. And I, I understand that we looked at, you know, we looked at the environmental survey that was done, but was the code ever specifically looked at and questioned so that you would know ahead of time what was and was not allowed? I mean, as, as the property owner, that is your responsibility, so it, that's the definition of a self-created hardship.
But when, like I said earlier, when we looked at the code, when you look at R two or the previous version of the code, there is no provision that would suggest a prohibition on an auto body repair shop. There's nothing explicit, and there's nothing that explicitly prohibits an auto body repair shop. So again, I mean, the code is unclear as you see. The previous version of the code.
And that might make, take, asking a couple of questions, but I don't think inferring that, well, because it doesn't specifically prohibit it, that maybe that would be allowed. It's still
But we're not, we're not on to this, to the, throughout the evening, we're not gonna argue it, because we have an opinion, and you have one. Obviously, it's the same opinion, so I think, I mean, you made your case very clearly, but I think it, we've made ours also. I would like to ask if there's anybody else to speak in support, which might be you, or do you just want to be here? Oh, you own Kennedy's? Oh, okay, all right. So we assume you're in favor.
Yes.
Yeah, obviously. It's a joke, just a little lighthearted joke. Okay, is there anybody else to speak in favor? Anybody else to speak in opposition? Or are you just visiting? Neither, okay. If you're speaking to this case, all right, so the three, three of you can sit down and let this person speak, please. You have to introduce yourself and give your address, please.
Yeah, my name is Max Fried, I live at two five six Broadway here in Troy. So in support of neither party, from what I'm able From what I'm able to see, just quickly on my phone, there actually seem to be double definitions in the code, there's both. A motor vehicle repair services major and minor and automotive repair services major and minor. So I was only able to see definition for motor vehicle services, but there's nothing, there is no definition, it's. What I found was merely a clarification in the code about conditions that are put, you know, no longer than forty five days, can any vehicle sit around, et cetera, et cetera. So, yeah, this may actually be an issue for the next round of code revisions, because I didn't, at least just sitting here, I wasn't able to figure it out.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, since there's nobody else in the room, I presume. Yeah, right. Then. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add or question or?
I had one question, oh, is Mr. Kennedy going up?
Yeah, mhm, come ahead. Just introduce yourself and where you live.
Cliff Craft, the R F T, eight forty eighth Avenue, Lansingburg.
I was going to say, I know that.
My wife and I purchased Kennedys of Troy in twenty eleven, December. From Pete Saint Germain. Just for some quick background. Kennedys of Troy was located at two seventy one Third Street. And continuously operated as Kennedys since eighteen ninety two. That's. Hundred and thirty one years. So Kennedys was a big picture in Troy even before there were cars. Without going into the history of how all that happened. The fact of the matter is, it was the first company in New York State to do towing. Prior to that, there were no such things as tow cars. Since. Pete Saint Germain bought the business originally in nineteen sixty five from the Kennedy brothers. That's when towing began, nineteen sixty five. Kennedys served the city of Troy exclusively. Related to police department tow, department of public work, street cleaning, the whole, which everybody's pretty much. Continuously for fifty five. We, my wife and I personally served that contract for nine. Won't go into gory details, it was a horrific process. When the R F Ps came out, the way it was handled, the way it was treated by the previous deputy mayor and her contract guy. It was absolutely horrible. The city contract ended for Kennedys of Troy. At an estimated loss of four hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. Just an enormous sum for that. Prior to that, in a previous mayoral administration. They had been deprived of thirty three percent of total revenues through the city contract. Through Mayor Tungin's office in his last weekend on. So by the time. We ended up the first week after the closing, we bought that business. And we paid just under a million dollars to come into the city of Troy. We had lost almost seventy percent of the revenue. The first week of operation. It was terrible. So. That leads us to the present day. How did it end up that we're looking to go in one Eagle Avenue? Well, A, there are no other properties and we searched for two years. There are no other local properties available. That suit the needs of that company. A couple of individuals with the city have had no qualms in stating, we don't want automotive. If you want to get a car fixed, go buy a new one that's under warranty, take it to the dealer. We don't need any more scumbag repair shops in our city. That was a direct quote and I won't name the person. I beg to differ. I'm fifty two years in this business, I'm thirty two years a certified master technician. Kennedys is a hundred and thirty one years, hundred and thirty two years. In service to the community of Troy, doing this type of work. We have been of real benefit to the city, whether anybody wants to admit that or not. Whether they don't like the fact that their car got towed, free playing, whatever is irrelevant. Fact of the matter is, there is no other address that can serve. For the purpose that it needs to be served. If this doesn't happen, if we don't get some sort of relief from the city. Kennedys of Troy is going to be history. We spent the last of our money get getting out of the location we're in, why did we move in the first place? Nobody asked that question.
Okay, but all of this, I mean, I understand exactly where you're coming from, I understand all of that. But what we're speaking about is not Kennedys, I mean, you're absolutely right in everything you said about Kennedys, it's been a. A staple, a tray, whatever, tradition, however, ever and ever, and amen, I mean. We all know that, nobody has any problem with Kennedys, you could be in here with Conroy's, I mean. That's my name, you could be in here with McLaren's, Cormiles. Dandies, it's got nothing at all to do with Kennedys, it has to do with the fact. That it is something that's been, within months, we're being asked to. Set aside the new code. And 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 you know, I mean, you're welcome, I don't need to say this like it's going to sound, but you're welcome to take your seat again because this is. You know, we've heard what you said, and it really isn't a second slightly relevant to our situation here tonight.
They have a couple of questions that are relevant.
Well, okay, but they have to be very relevant because we're going to learn about this.
In this property at one Eagle Avenue. There are two tenants, potential. There's us and there's another company. Why is it that a week after we were informed there was a code problem? And I received a phone call from a code enforcement employee who said, hey, we're doing a walkthrough in the front of the building for the other company or their C O. It's great. So got that call, that was a Thursday, on a Friday, I get a meeting. The landlord Joe brings the manager of this other company over to meet me and I said, oh, nice to meet you, what business are you in? Oh, we handle waste motor oil and hazard.
Okay, but once again, as I say, that.
Why is it okay for them to have their?
I have no idea, all I know is that we're talking about putting an automotive repair shop. In an area that does not allow automotive repair shops. If there's something else going on in that building that it was not within the code, I'm sure code enforcement has already. penalized Mr. Sillianto for it. I can't answer that question because I understand where you're coming from, I understand your mindset on this open. That's not what we're here about tonight. We're here about the fact that an automotive repair shop. Is not allowed in that zone. And that's the only thing that we are looking on. I have all the respect in the world for Kennedys towing, we say it's been a staple in the city for. It's got nothing to do with you. Or it's got the fact that it's an automotive repair shop, we keep saying the same thing over and over again, and I think we've now reached the point. Where if we have no more. Discussion, we're ready to take a vote. Am I right? Or no, I appreciate what you're saying. Okay, fine, that's what you're, that's your opinion. Okay, no problem. So are we ready to vote or do we have something else we want to add? Um, I don't know, do we need a secret?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Katie.
Madam Chair, for. P L Z B A twenty twenty three zero zero. Forty six, I would. Ask that the board find this proposal to be an unlisted action. With sufficient information available upon which to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause significant environmental.
Do we have a second?
I'll say.
John seconds, and on the motion alone favor, I opposed. Carrie, do we have a motion on the application?
Chair, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Excuse me. Based on on the materials that were submitted, based on the discussions here this evening. In regards to P L Z B A two zero two three zero zero four six. Excuse me, I'd like to make a motion to deny the variance. Excuse me. First. The the applicant stated that there was other interest in the property. I think that could be more fully explored to to determine whether or not. They can yield a reasonable return without this variance. In regards to. The the hardship. Being. Unique or not. It's only unique in the fact that this is. An explicitly prohibited use. Within the zone. And so that leads to my third point that the project. Will alter the character in the neighborhood, that is in regards to. The the setback of five hundred feet from the seawall. And finally, based on the discussion tonight, it appears. That some of the need for the variance. Is self-created, and for those reasons, I'm going to make a motion that we deny the application.
Do we have a second? Second from Evie Dandy. And on the motion, Katie McLaren.
Uh, yes, to deny.
Kathy Conroy, I vote yes to deny. Evie Dandy.
Yes, deny.
And John Normal.
I vote yes to deny.
Okay, sorry. Okay, do we have any? We have no other business, no other cases, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
John. Second by Evie, on favor, aye. Adjourn.